Okay, well, it is 6:31 and I will call this meeting to order. Could I have a motion for the adoption of remote participation?
So moved as written in the minutes, as written in the agenda, sorry.
And that was the second?
It was.
Yes. Okay, let's do a roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Steve, you're up.
Okay, Dave's not here. Okay, Steve will do Concord, yes?
Lauren Spolink Dover, yes?
Dr. Lexington, yes.
Thank you.
Alice Lucas, so yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to Chair's report, I will open it up for the good of the organization.
I have one thing that is something I saw in some email traffic. I'm very pleased that the superintendent and staff will be holding a meeting later on in July, perhaps towards the end of the month with some folks associated with the lab, L A B B B program and their administrators or former administrators to look at what possible options remain for offering lab services on the present Minuteman campus. Thank you very much for scheduling that, Ed. I do appreciate it.
Great, thanks, Michael. Judy?
I don't think we've seen each other since graduation, so I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. It was, went off without a hitch. It was a, it's a beautiful building, it was a beautiful day. The kids were motivated, the parents were excited. And there's a lot of behind the scenes that goes to organizing such an event, so thank you. It was seamless.
Thank you, Judy. Anything else? Anything else from the school committee? Okay. Ed, yes, you want to add?
Yeah, for lack of a better place. We were notified today by the governor that Minuteman was successful in its round three C T I grant application, that's Career and Technical Institute Initiative. The Minuteman Technical Institute, although the information has been embargoed, the note said we could tell our boards. So I can tell my board that we received, will receive $480,000 to train folks in advanced manufacturing, bio manufacturing, allied health professions. And I think there's one more, which I can't find the thing right now, but that was, we applied for the maximum, I believe, and we got the maximum, so we're, we're pretty happy with that.
Congratulations, that's wonderful.
Thank you. Hold on just a second. The other thing, we had two staff members were successful in getting a, another grant. It's called the MassWin, stands for Massachusetts Work Immersion Network. Basically, it funds teachers, academic teachers, special ed teachers and vocational teachers to do an, a paid internship in a work environment. And we had two staff were successful in doing that. They get a stipend of $5,000. They also get some credits on a transcript. The other thing for the good of the organization, I wanted to bring this committee up to date on is, you know, the superintendents in the business office merged as a result of the new building. The merger was, was planned for from an architectural and design process in accord with the M S B A formulas. You may recall they have limitations on the size of district offices, so we have to combine into one, one office. So a personnel reorganization had been under review for several years based upon this. And I've worked with a couple of consultants over the years, as well as speaking with some other vocational school superintendents to understand how we could continue to approve our district office effectiveness and maintain a high level of customer service. So in addition, myself and the executive leadership team has worked with Jeff Lawrence, who you all know, consultant the past year in preparation for a potential, well, best word for it is a reorganization. And now we've had a resignation, the director of finance has resigned and the H R corps has resigned. And now we have the opportunity to take some action around this reorganization. And I should say that the basic premise for the work is to have a better sense of our individual strengths. When I say the work, I mean with the executive leadership team. Have a better sense of our strengths and how to leverage these in the framework that work committed to of collaboration and team development. So the details are in progress. But generally, current executive administrative staff, who we're very blessed to have an awesome set of gifts and interests and abilities and talents. We're looking at how we can assume some of these responsibilities within the existing administrative team. So over the retreat, which we're having in a few weeks, we have Jeff Lawrence coming in to work with us, help identify any training or professional development we might need. And we're also, you know, recognize that licensure and process has to be part of the reorganization. So we'll continue to, I'll continue to keep you up to date on what we're doing in regards to how workflows or procedures might be changing in the district office. And also, we want to be more proactive, maybe not proactive isn't the world, but we're going to be more aware of, you know, the policy work that the school committee, subcommittees undertaking over the next year. How can we position ourselves to be more, you know, helping lead some of that because we know a lot of our policies have to be reviewed and we've got a great process in place, so we want to be able to support that. So I just wanted to give folks a general overview. As I said, the details are going to be worked through over the summer. And it's a great opportunity to do something we've thought about for a while since the planning for the building began. But so that comes under the good of the organization.
Well, we look forward to hearing more. Are there any questions for Ed about that? Judy?
Just thank you for the policy.
Sure. You'll be busy this year.
Okay, as I said, we do look forward to hearing more as you develop your plans. Anything else? Good of the organization? Well, this can fall under good of the organization, I guess. You know, that we're very, very happy that Jennifer Leoni has been reappointed to the Minuteman School Committee by the town of Lancaster. Um, on page three of your packets, there is the updated weighted vote chart. So every year, a weighted vote is in a reformulated according to the formula in the, in the, in the, oh my God, I'm losing my words, the regional agreement. Um, so I just want to call it to everyone's attention. Want to see if there's any questions. I know I do have one question that I wanted to ask about. And that's on the four-year rolling, rolling average enrollment, where there's a total of 336. I was just trying to understand that total. It seemed low for kind of a...
I'm assuming that's the member district October one report from last year.
I think it'd be helpful, I think it'd be helpful if we could get the background numbers that were used to get that, that table.
Yeah. Is, I didn't put that table together. Do you know who did?
I don't know who you're asking, Ed.
I'm asking anybody who might know. Oh, okay. I see Mr. Girardi put that together, so Kevin and I will review that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on it at this point? Okay. As this is our last school committee meeting of the 2020, 2021 year, what we traditionally do is to take a look back and reflect on our school committee goals that we had for this year. So I'd like to take a moment to do that. We had two overall goals that I'd like to talk about. And then every committee had a goal. And I'd like to then turn it over to the committee chairs to, to talk about, you know, their committee goals. So our first overall goal was to support the administration and providing high-quality education to students in the current environment. And when it comes right down to it, you know, that, all the goals are important, but that goal is why we are all here, to ensure high-quality education to the students. And I'd just like to take a moment to say that, you know, really the successes over the past year are really due to such a talented, committed team of faculty and staff. We know this was a really hard year. We know there were unheard of challenges, but all of you, you know, rose to the occasion. And for that, I thank you, and I know every other school committee member as well. We are extraordinarily thankful to the entire team. And, you know, and of course, what makes it all work is the phenomenal leadership of our superintendent. And Ed, you know, I, we thank you very, very much. As I said, we know there are a lot of challenges this year. And I know I am just so proud of how Minuteman rose to those challenges.
Well, I, you know, I thank you for that and for acknowledging the staff and, and the teachers. But many of you who've been on the school committee for a long time know that we haven't always enjoyed such a strong school committee who's focused on the things that we're focused on together. And that has made a tremendous amount of difference for all of us. And I'm just very grateful for, for the way that you work together, the way that you support all of us. So thank you.
Thank you, Ed. I know it is really a pleasure to be working with this group of people on this, on my fellow school committee members. Our second goal was to work with the administration to oversee the completion of the athletic field project. And again, you know, thanks to Ed, the administration, the building committee Ford, you know, we are making significant progress on the fields. Our students will have wonderful athletic fields. So Ed Ford, you know, the finance committee, the building committee, everyone else that has been intimately involved in this project, thank you. So those were our two overall goals. And then we, every committee set goals, so I'd like to just call on each committee chair to, you know, talk about, you know, the goals that you had set for the past year. So Steve, you want to kick us off with the finance committee?
Sure. Just about a year ago, I was the only member of the finance committee because Dave from Lexington retired and Jim, because he was from Belmont, left. So, you know, we had great replacements with, with both Jennifer and Michael. And they've been great members, asking a lot of good, good tough questions as we went through the year. So one of our goals is to review and understand the annual budget and non-budget accounts. And obviously, we're very, you know, we're very knowledgeable of the budget. We go through the budget process, we hear all the department recommendations and, and work with the, all the iterations of the budget that the superintendent has worked through before the school committee finally sees it. We also review the up-to-date budget reports every month as to how we're doing expenditure-wise. And that also includes the revolving funds, which obviously have somewhat of a life of their own. Another item is ensure that items from the annual budget, or excuse me, annual audit is addressed. This was kind of an unusual year because as you remember, we, we had the audit presentation I don't know, two or three months ago, I can't remember exactly, but it's the first audit I've ever seen where there wasn't a management letter recommending changes. So that made our, our job a lot easier this year because it seemed like everything was, was fine. And finally, to, to review recommendations in Policy Section D, which is fiscal, fiscal management, examine per, per student costs. I don't, we didn't really get into that this year. We had so many, so many other things going on. And obviously, developing opinions on financial items that come before the board. And, you know, clearly, we were very involved with the, how the, the fields were going to be financed. And, and for example, our last meeting of a, of a week or so ago, very involved in review the recommendations and do your transfers that, that the committee will be looking at tonight. So I, yeah, it's been a pretty good year, a little bit of a transition for us because I'm fairly new. And then we had, you know, two members on the, on the school, on the, on the FinCom. So, but it was a good year.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, Steve, for leading the committee. Thank you to, you know, Michael and Jennifer for your work on this committee. You know, I feel like we are in very good hands with our finance committee. I am just moving along my, my little Zoom row here. Ford, do you want to talk about, actually, building committee and strategic planning committee?
Building committee, as you know, from the point of view of our main building, building was completed. It's operational. We're still trying to close out the building. I can, I'll give my, sort of my building committee report on that right now. We still have really one large item, and that's trying to grow grass, wetlands in, in that area. And until we do, we're not going to get our certificate, a final certificate of occupancy from Lincoln. And that is still underway in progress. And my feeling is we'll probably have to wait till the fall for, so grass can grow. But it's, it's, we're, we're getting there slowly but surely. In terms of the building committee working in the fields, I will give a report on that a little later. So those are my two quick reports.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you to, you know, the special thank you to the building committee as well. Um, let's see, Jeff. I just have to call it C A A. Communications, admissions and?
Something.
Help me here.
Who can remember, admissions and something good?
Access.
So as you may, even though it seems like a thousand years ago from September, we were originally going to be focused on ensuring or approaching the goal of full admissions at the school. And we had a little surprise that not only did we reach full admissions, we reached beyond full admissions and it was all from in-district students. So we made a lot of changes in our view of what was important was really now to deal with what may be a new reality of having a school with a possible waiting list. And so that's the, the main change we made. And a lot of the details of what we did are going to be reviewed later in the C A A reports. I won't duplicate it now.
Okay, thank you very much. Jennifer, welcome. We are doing our report on school committee goals and going committee by committee. So you had the superintendent.
Yes. So I'm sorry I'm late. The rain seems to have made the traffic out there pretty horrendous. So I've got the survey. Everybody got a copy of the survey. I will coordinate everything and collaborate with Dan and we'll get the final report into the state by the end of the month.
Right.
And we, we don't need to do anything else because we already negotiated the extension to Ed's contract. So we're all set everywhere else. Did anybody have any questions about the survey or the, what came back?
No.
Sorry. Yes, Mr. Stuland?
We're not going to discuss this any other time during the meeting, is that correct?
Um, there actually is a place under subcommittee reports.
Okay, great. I'll just have a couple of brief comments, so we can do it then.
Okay. Yeah, well, this is just my reporting on.
For all the work and your committee for all the work of putting together the survey and.
Well, we, we, Ed's team did most of the work, so. And I think that the, I love the supporting documents. I just love the new format. It makes it so much easier to compile this. So.
That's great. Yep. So when we can have, we'll have a discussion on it when we get to the subcommittee reports. Right now, we're just reporting on goals. So thank you very much and thank you for leading this work, Jennifer. Next is Alice, the policy subcommittee.
So I would say that on the major goal of getting the policy manual updated online, we do not yet have grass growing on the policy manual, but we're getting close. So, you know, there are some things that need to be done with the footers on that. And, and that will be put to bed. The next thing is Section I, which Judy and I have been going through, policy by policy comparing with M A S C. We're not quite finished with that. And Section B is with the attorneys, which we went over at length at the last meeting. So we did not meet the goal of getting everything finished on getting the policy manual online, but we got very close.
Right. Well, and I want to just again acknowledge how much work the policy subcommittee has been doing. Want to thank Judy for jumping into the fray and helping with that work. And I know Amy is, you know, a very, very active participant on that committee as well. You know, Ed had mentioned how well the school committee is working together right now. I, I also want to say just thank everyone for your hard work and for everyone, you know, has been participating, you know, not only in the meetings, but in the subcommittees. And I think that that has really led to a lot of, you know, successful work in moving our votes forward. So thank you all for everyone's very active participation over the last year. Any final comments on goals? Okay. So let's move to superintendent's report. Review of teacher summer work?
Yeah, you may recall the last few years, we've used the pot of Carl Perkins money, which is our federal allocation to support teacher work over the summer. And because the federal Perkins grant is on a different fiscal year, it ends September 30th. It kind of works well for this sort of activity. The academy development team was reestablished or re-energized for 2021, 2022. And I want to thank Katie and especially Jean DiPaolo, the Assistant C T E Director, for gathering folks again, kind of surveying staff who wanted to be re-engaged. Because, you know, COVID put all of that stuff on hold for a while. So we have a larger academy development team. And there were about $35,000 worth of proposals submitted. We only had 25. But the, and all of the, all of the proposals were funded, but not to the levels that were requested. But the five projects funded with the academy development team proposals were one, curriculum mapping, which is a system that we use so that teachers on the academic side and the vocational side can look up any other teacher's curriculum and see where they are on that day and be able to draw from that opportunities to integrate. Integration, school-wide integration was the second project funded. The integration of career and technical curriculum with academic curriculum, the core foundational belief. We also have some work going on to improve the portfolio and senior project. These are required for all of our seniors to graduate. Also have a project approved. You may recall that we, our photovoltaic system that was installed and is now hooked up and running, I think it's hooked up, guaranteed us $2 million. Well, in addition to that system, we have to integrate some of the lead curriculum into our, into the school. So Eric Marshall, the Chair of the Science Department, has a project, he's working with all of the science teachers. And we're going to be incorporating 10 hours of sustainability curriculum into all the science classes. So all the students will be getting a sustainability component. And that gives us compliance with the lead credential. The fifth project was the Wednesday Academy time. You may recall before COVID B C that we had a change in the schedule so that we could honor some time during the week, every week, where the academies would work together on integration projects, senior projects, whatever it might be. So we have a group of teachers working on how to best use that time. There was a sixth project funded outside of the Perkins on a continuing to develop our peer leadership program. These are juniors who, typically juniors, who have received training over the summer and during the early part of the fall to kind of work with Anthony on admissions, recruitment, marketing, enrollment. But they also mentor the freshmen because they're in their shops together, the freshmen and the juniors traditionally. So I'm pretty pleased with those projects. All of them are underway. Some of them are completed and we'll be getting the summaries for them over the, over the next few weeks so that we can use them in our retreat and, and begin to implement some of the changes recommended by the teachers. School building committee report and athletic fields project update. I guess Ford did a wonderful four-sentence overview, so I don't know if anyone has any more questions.
Well, I want to add a few things.
I thought you were all done.
Whenever you build a building, there are some things that can happen and leaks from the roof. We've had a few of those. Most of them have been solved. The last ones were, we know the reason why in the environmental area. It does mean that they're going to be taking off part of the roof on that area over the next 16 weeks or so. New membrane is going to go down, insulation and all that, but we've solved what the problem is. And that's going to be taken care of by the contractor that installed it. On the athletic side, I was on the campus today and walked the site. I am so excited about it, I can hardly stand it. You know, I always talked about this would be the icing on the cake for the, for the school, and I think it will be. And if you get a chance, especially in two or three weeks from now, you ought to drive by and, and take a look at it, progressing on time and on budget. Baseball field is scheduled to open in late August, football track mid-September and softball late September. The concrete base has been put down and that's where we're starting to identify what this thing's going to look like for the track and the walkways around the stadium. And they've been installed. It takes about 30 days. You have to let them cure. So, and then they're going to start putting down the turf on top of the gravel. That's three feet of gravel around the field, on the fields. And we've had about four inches of rain in the last, what, 48 hours or so. The drainage works beautifully. I mean, it's, it's sensational how it's working. So that's being compacted. And so another three weeks, you're going to start seeing turf out there. Light poles have been installed, most of them at least. Fencing is going to start soon and then in a. Fencing is going to start soon and then in two or three weeks, they're going to start working the soft hill field. Heimlich, who's our general contractor, they're doing a fabulous job. They really are, they know their business, they're doing well. And I was with Jerry Albert, who is part of Skanska's OPM team. And he said, he's never seen anything, how well they're working and getting the job done. So drive by, you know, especially in a couple of weeks, just do a drive by. It's, I can't blow you away. I stood in the middle and the whole complex, when you look at it, it's all framed by mature trees all the way around, except for the place looking west, looking at the building. And I just picture young kids playing sports on that team and saying to mom and dad, I want to go there. So Jeff is having a real problem in another four or five years when he's still handling this part of it. And the school is, it's just, it's, it's great. So that's my building and athletic report.
Thank you so much for, Jeff.
It's so refreshing to see Ford so excited that he actually talks longer than expected in his reports.
I want to just convince Ed that I can talk a little bit longer than two minutes.
Doesn't happen very often and Ford, I share your excitement that we were able, after all the years and years and years of talking, what are we going to do for the athletics in the fields? To have this project done. This very intelligently conceived portion of the project, considering all the restrictions we were under. So that this fall, the students will be back on campus in a truly excellent sports environment for them that we, despite incredible obstacles that we ran into along the way, have managed to put together. And I just, you know, it could take me hours to reiterate all the different meetings and twists and turns that it took to get to this point and changes of thinking and having to react to things. And then after being knocked over, picking yourself up and keep going on it to get to this point. So Ford and Superintendent Boquillan can't wait to see the fields in operation, can't wait to see it, very exciting.
It is exciting. Alice.
Jeff has inspired me to say also that anybody who's been following the school for the past 20 years, the fields is a culmination of a very long project to bring equity to vocational students. Very long time ago, they didn't have music, they didn't have art, they had substandard fields. It was really, if you look at, you know, privilege and equity and all those words people throw around these days, it was not the same. It was not equitable and now they have a fine school. And that is really, it's more than just a school. It is actually a trajectory of improvement for education in general. And as celebration of that culminating in these fields and thank you Ford and Doc Sean.
Well, I've had the opportunity this spring to go to several high schools and see athletic fields. And let me tell you, nobody will even come close to what we're doing. And that's, that's a fact, nobody's going to come that close, at least in terms of the high school.
And the price was very reasonable and the timing of it helped. And we're going to get a lot of, a lot of, a lot for our money as we did on the school building, in my opinion.
Okay, any, any other comments on this? Can we move on to enrollment capacity projects?
Sure, there's not a lot new that I can recall. And I can, if rest of the folks don't realize it, but the this CAA committee, I deal with these kind of capacity building updates with them as well. You will see, I can report that the the athletic field project looks very promising in providing us with some additional funding for capacity building projects. We won't know that for a few more months, but perhaps by September, we'll have a pretty solid number. I do believe we're going to come in under budget for the athletic fields. We'll spend all the money that we borrowed for lighting for sure. But you may recall that there's $1.2 million that the school committee voted for out of the capital stabilization fund if it was necessary to expend it. So I'm hoping that we're going to be able to conserve some of that. And then in addition, we'll hear about the, the transfers and that's going to add even more to the, the budget for the capacity projects. My sense is that my, my very strong sense is that we have enough funding to complete the north building, which would be the completion of the, basically the metal fab shop, which will free up all kinds of space at that end of the building out of advanced manufacturing and welding, sort of has a cascade effect. We also had a tour of the the building on the east end of campus, which is about a 16,000 square foot building, which is now occupied by one person. We also had some folks from our advisory committee from the animal science program. We had a consultant, for lack of a better word, who equips dental offices as well as veterinary hospitals. Look at the space and it looks very good. Our architects were there as well. And so we hope to have more of a design process really beginning in earnest towards the middle to the end of, towards the end of the summer with budgets in the fall. Oh, I shouldn't, our animal science program was officially approved by the Department of Ed this past week too. So any questions about enrollment capacity projects? Okay, the next item is the state CTE admissions. The Board of Education approved new regulations for admissions. We may talk a little bit more about that, but overall there, you may, a few months ago, I sent you out a top 10 changes proposed by DSE. Pretty much all of those changes were voted upon. DSE has yet to provide us with any kind of an update or guidance in regards to implementation of some of these changes and regulations. I think it's pretty clear that these will impact the 22, 23 admissions cycle. They did have a meeting scheduled with us, us being the superintendent. I think until it last past Monday, they say they're not going to meet with us again until, well, they're going to meet with us the week of August, the first week in August with the MAVA Board of Directors. And I will be at that meeting. I did give testimony today in regards to some bills that are in committee. I gave testimony to the Joint Education Committee, Chairman Peish from the Western Area and then Chairman Lewis from Western Mass. I basically spoke to the, the need to expand access, to add seats, to make the process easier for expanding. We also, I also talked about giving all districts the opportunity to enter into long-term groundley establishment of a deputy commissioner for CTE in the Department of Education. Any questions on admissions? We'll be, you'll be hearing more about it. Can you hear me okay? It says my internet is unstable. Is it all right?
Some of your words are a little choppy, but we're getting.
It's on and off a little bit.
All right. We may have some random children still here with their devices on, I don't know. Annual town meeting update, our budget is passed, every town passed it. MAVA leadership update. Just, I think I've mentioned Steve Sherrick is now the executive director of MAVA. Ernie Hool is the president of MAVA. You may know they both worked at Minuteman in their last jobs. So I've been getting a lot of calls and I'm helping, trying to help with them as being co-chair of the Legislative Committee for MAVA in the coming year. I had another note, but I can't read it. So that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
For whatever you may have heard.
I, I think we got it all, there are just some words that were a little choppy. So any questions for Ed?
Yes, I do. It's Michael. Do I read the notes correctly that DSE has written into their requirements for the coming student years that admissions will be governed by a strict in, in district applicant first rule? And I wanted to ask what they meant by the program. Program by program, I believe our notes in the school committee packet were, does that mean per shop as space is available?
So there's been no change in the, in the regulations regarding the language around accepting qualified in district students. The, what was the second part of your question?
I, I believe our notes for this meeting said that all qualified students from within the district will be admitted into the programs before out of district. And I wondered if, and I wondered if that meant that they, that DSE was preferentiating by shops rather than by school.
They've always had that language. The problem with that language is that when, well, back up. Most applications for eighth graders ask the applicants to put in three shops that they're most interested in. And they rank, sometimes they're ranked one, two, three. In other words, this shop is the one I'm most interested in. The, in reality, a student isn't placed into a program until after exploratory is completed. So it's really kind of a confusing gray area because students don't apply to programs, they apply to Minuteman. And then they go through an exploratory process and at the end of that process, a program is made available to them. That has never been clarified or dealt with in any kind of DSE regulation, despite years of asking for that. So.
I, I see this becoming a point of contention. And it's unfortunate that we don't have guidance on it at the state level. But I read the plain words and I know that parents are going to read the plain words also. And we are going to have to come in, step into the breach and offer an explanation of what this means if the state doesn't. Perhaps they're setting us up for, for failure here, I don't know, but it, it's unresolved in my mind.
So I think that certainly there's going to be, you know, further discussion about it. And while the state hasn't put out any guidance yet, you know, we do anticipate that it will be coming at some point. So, you know, I think that there will be, you know, other opportunities to be continuing this discussion. Okay, any other questions? Okay, then let's move on to finance report. Is that Steve, Ed, Kevin?
Yeah, Kevin and Steve will take that as it deals with the transfers and stuff. And I didn't express my deepest gratitude to Kevin for continuing to be on board as our consultant as we go through some of this reorganization discussion this summer and into the fall.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks. Why don't I, why don't I start with describing the information that was included in your packet, beginning on page 19. Each year around this time, we try and clean up the books, if you will, by making sure that at each subtotal of our function codes, that all of those balances are positioned in a surplus position. And so we go through identifying areas where there are some over expenditures and other areas where we've seen excess balances to try and balance those out when the auditors come in and close the books. So on page 19 of your packet, you'll find that the summary budget transfers are listed there. They total 1,319,000. So the items that are listed on the transfers from account up on the top side is where we identified surpluses. And then the items identified below are some of the areas where we needed funding. The unique thing about what we're proposing this year is moving 550,000 into the stabilization reserve account, which is the last item before the sun on the bottom of page 19. And it, it speaks to the comment the superintendent made earlier about trying to provide funding opportunities for campus expansion. We've given, given some of the surpluses that we were able to identify this year. We thought, we thought it was an opportunity to allocate some of those surpluses from the district budget into the stabilization reserve fund with an authorized transfer from the school committee, which will increase our stabilization fund so that upon completion of the, of the athletic fields, we can identify what the balance left over is of the million two that was authorized for the athletic field. Add an additional 550,000 and work on, on, on the buildings that the superintendent mentioned. So as part of this vote, that's what we're trying to accomplish. If I can move now to page 20 of the document, you'll see that this is a summary analysis that what we do is trying to project where our excess and deficiency balance will be as of year end. Our excess and deficiency basically takes a fund balance from the previous year and we take some adjustments in terms of what revenue we received in excess of what we anticipated and what unexpendable balances that were left as of June 30th. We also deduct what we used in fiscal 22 to balance the budget. There are some revolving account deficits that we incurred primarily food services as a result of the environment we were working in. And then you'll see as we work down the page, there's a line item for the stabilization account of 550,000, meaning that that will come out of the, of the fund balance and move over into the stabilization account. So when we get down to the bottom line there where it says projected E and D at 7, 121, we're anticipating a balance of about 696,000, which is a little better than where we've been in past years. But in addition to maintaining that, that 796,000, we're also have the ability to allocate the 550,000. Pages 21 and 22 basically just go through the line items by function code, trying to identify that. That's a review that we went through in detail last week at the last finance subcommittee meeting. So what we're asking for tonight is authorization to move forward with the transfers as presented. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that folks may have.
I'm moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and, okay, let's move to discussion. Jeff?
Two things, Kevin. The first one is I assume that the deficit for the food services is directly a result of COVID and not something that we expect moving forward. Would that be correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The second one is a comment. Considering all the various financial impacts of COVID and the expenses that we had to do that would have been unanticipated, the grants you were able to get from various people, considering all that, I think that I'm really happy. I think that I'm really happy with how the budget went and these transfers in this sheet here. And do you agree that, agree that I should be very happy about that?
Well, I think, you know, some of the obvious ones, certainly if you recall, this time last year, the superintendent was rolling out some staffing adjustments that were made to the FY twenty-one budget as a result of, of COVID, because we didn't know what to anticipate as far as state aid goes. So I think we knew moving into the fiscal year that we had some capacity in our staffing and in our health insurance. And, and, and also as a result of the model that we were using, transportation costs were less. So I think, I think they were just because of the way the model went, it just provided some surpluses, which we can now use those surpluses for an opportunity to expand, uh, expand the campus.
So we actually have fairly good news financially at the end of this year. And it, it was not necessarily going to go in that direction, but that's, that's how it went, partly because of the state doing some good things and partly because of good planning here. So I'm, I did, at the beginning of the year, I, you know, I had reservations about how we're going to end the year with all the challenges that we faced. And I see that it's a good picture. I'm very happy about that. I think the finance committee is probably pretty happy about that, too, I would imagine, Steve.
Absolutely. Very happy. And we recommend that we unanimously recommended this expenditure plan.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spolinger Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, yes.
Okay, thank you. Monthly donations?
Yes. Thank you for that vote. Monthly donations you'll see are listed on page twenty-three. You'll see five donations we're seeking that the school committee formally accept and will acknowledge with gratitude from the donors.
So moved. Up second.
Any discussion? Let's vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spolinger Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Surplus property?
Yes, it's just a cleanup item as we typically do when we identify surplus items. We seek this vote of the school committee to authorize the disposal of the surplus items pursuant to our school committee policy. So you'll see that this, that we provided an extensive list of technology items that we're seeking to dispose of. We'd ask your, your vote to support that.
They're moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Jeff?
Kevin, do we happen to know how old most of these computers were? And whether they lasted the anticipated life when they were purchased?
I, I have not had that conversation with the technology director specifically. I do know though that we, we were on a, a revolving inventory management of our technology. I think that, I do know that we've had to expand our method of, of the capability of the machines as a result of the virtual learning. So I think there may have been some early obsolescence as a result of that.
Okay, so my real comment is when you buy technology, you make a guess at how long it's going to last. And you don't really know based, because you cannot anticipate a hundred percent future needs. So I hope that whatever the time life of this equipment was, whether it was longer than expected or less than expected, is used to instruct us for the future of understanding better how long these laptops and teacher computers can, can last. And obviously this year was exceptional. Because not only did they all have to go on to Zoom on a regular basis, which requires a certain amount of computing power, but I imagine that the amount of software they had to use in the daily course of participating in the school was greater than anticipated as it was in Newton where I teach. Much more reliance on technology than anticipated or necessary in the past. So just a, a comment on planning for obsolescence of technology, which we can never guess a hundred percent.
Alice. Have you been able to replace the equipment? I know before it was difficult to get stuff in. There were various delays. I don't know. Everything was on the ever given stuck in the suez.
Well, we, the supply chain is still strained. That's why we're trying to order things in advance. We should know in a week or two if we're going to have all the one-to-one devices for our incoming freshman class in August or in September. Victor's, Victor Woodruff, our tech director, has been very proactive when it comes to purchasing to the point where I don't, I don't like seeing him in the front of my door because he's usually got some requisition that he of course has all the right quotes. Anyway, yeah, we're, we're on track. We're, but the supply chain is still strained. So like, we cannot say a hundred percent right now that we'll be fully equipped for this fall. I don't, I don't know anyone who can.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, let's move to a vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spolinger Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else under the finance report?
Nope, that covers it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Kevin. Subcommittee reports, Strategic Planning Subcommittee, Ford?
Thank you, Pam. As you all, I think, know by now, Pam and Alice and join me on this committee. First, I want to thank, in the process, I'm going to talk to you about Kevin Mahoney for his assistance in, in what I'm about to describe. Minuteman's request for consulting services for our superintendent's search received two candidates. We advertised it. We received two candidates, one Massachusetts Association of School Committees, MASC and New England School Development Council, NESDEC. Both submitted proposals and both met our criteria for an interview. On Thursday, July one, Pam, Alice and I met with each firm for a separate one-hour meeting each. Art Betancourt, Michael Palladino, Carolyn Burke represented NESDEC, and Glenn Kuchar represented MASC. Your Strategic Planning Subcommittee developed eleven questions ahead of time that were asked of each firm. Both candidates represented their services professionally and in great detail. Both candidates are qualified to assist us in our search. After the interviews, the three of us discussed and reviewed the applicant's proposals and responses to our questions. A motion was made to recommend to the July sixth school committee, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, MASC, to provide technical assistance and support for our superintendent's search process. And that vote was unanimous. It was made really on the following factors. One, there had experience and successful searches for vocational schools. And the recent ones were Greater New Bedford Vocational, Blue Hills Vocational and Essex Technical. We were impressed with MASC's knowledge of Minuteman, firsthand knowledge of Minuteman and our vocational education in general. And Glenn Kuchar will be the MASC representative due our search. Therefore, I would like to make the following motion. To enter into a contract with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, MASC, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars to provide superintendent search services to Minuteman led by Glenn Kuchar.
So a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Any comments or questions? Judy, just with gratitude to the subcommittee. Thank you. That's a yeoman's duty. A lot of work. Thank you. Any other questions? Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Ford, could you describe a little what the tasks will be for the consultant, you know, a little more detail?
Yeah, they're really going to assist a future of search committee in the process of first working with the information that we have developed after two retreats to develop a profile. And that profile will be eventually voted on by the school committee before it goes out as public. It will help us put together an advertisement piece that will go out to the community at large and quote nationwide search. It will help us in the formulation of a search committee, identifying the types of people that we would like on the committee and who they might represent. So it's really helping us with the entire process. They will, what I call advertise for candidates and they do it through their channels, which are quite extensive when you look at it. Both firms have similar channels, but it'll be a full search that goes out. They will help in the screening of candidates along with the committee. And we will be presenting to the school committee, hopefully more than one, two or three candidates for the school committee to make a decision. We are not an appointment committee. The committee will be nothing more than finding candidates that we think are appropriate for the school committee to select. The timeframe we've said to them is we would like to form a search committee at least before September, if possible, and that would be appointed by the school committee. And then start advertising in September for a candidate to have hopefully a successful appointment by the beginning of next year, in January, to start at the end of the school year.
Okay, I have Michael and Jennifer.
Yeah, Mike, my only question was Ford, you had mentioned they had recently assisted New Bedford Voke with their, with their search.
Correct.
And has that search been concluded satisfactorily to, to their own school committee?
That's my understanding.
That's all. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Just a quick question. Well, how do you, what size of a search committee do you anticipate?
That's yet to be defined. They're saying probably in the area, under a dozen, you know, anywhere from eight to eleven, somewhere in there.
Okay, I just, too big gets to be cumbersome and too small gets to be, you know, exclusive, so.
Let me just hold it to what I said.
Okay.
You're right.
Questions for Ford of our comments?
Is there Alice or Pam? Any, do you want to chime in?
Okay, let's move to a vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spolinger Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Finance committee. Steve, anything more that you want to add?
No, pretty much our last meeting was discussing the end of year transfers. So that was basically it.
Okay. CAA update.
Okay, it says right here, Communication Access at Admission Subcommittee, CAA. Got it. So I wonder if the superintendent or Anthony would like to have any comments before I start moving on to the motion that I'm going to ask the school committee to consider today? And the additional comments and the things that we've discussed earlier in the meeting, either Ed or, or Anthony?
No, I think we can move along. And if there's any discussion under the vote, we can answer questions there.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, so other members of the CAA feel free to chime in if I miss a, a point. So going back to what I said earlier, we had to, of course, as you know this all, change direction to instead of trying to plan how we can increase enrollment to deal with the realities of the enrollment we have now. We've already talked about expanding the school to eight hundred students. But there are a lot of other issues that are important, one of which Michael brought up, I'm going to talk about very briefly. So I have on my list here, three major items that we talked about our last meeting. The first major item is how do changes voted on by the Mass School Board and mandated by the DOE impact our admission and slot allocation procedures? And there are some sub-questions in that that, that are tricky. The first one is what is the meaning of a qualified student? Because if we are supposed to take all qualified in district students first, we have to be very careful in deciding what it means to be a qualified student. Another question is, under what circumstances do we offer slots to out-of-district students? So there has to be a time at which if we have slots available at the school and there are currently no in-district students who are vying for those slots, we have to say, let's give them out to out-of-district students. So how do we coordinate that and, and keep within the rules? And the lack of clarity, as was mentioned previously, the lack of clarity from the state makes our job extremely difficult in, in defining how we should move forward. But the reorganization of Mava may be helpful in creating a line of communication with the state to help us out with some of these issues. So the first thing is what do we do in our admission policy and our slot allocation policy based upon the new rules coming down? And some of that is we can't answer yet. The other two things are related. One is a question we've asked in the past, and if we're going to pursue it, then we better start thinking about it seriously, is should we explore adding a new member town? Now, if we were to add a new member town, then we become more financially stable over the long term. Because we still don't know if the amount of applicants to the school is a new normal or is it temporary or what? So if we choose to add a new appropriate member town and one wants to join, then we have more long-term financial stability. But then there will be fewer slots available to the current member town. So that's something we have to decide if we want to pursue. And the other thing is, what does diversity mean for Minuteman? Okay, because diversity is a, a topic for which there is a lot of disagreement as to what it means. And it could mean something different for us than it means for other schools. So in order to, and we've talked about these things a little bit through the year, but in order to get going more formally on them, we need to be able to start exploring what are the opportunities and what are the financial impacts of these items? And for that reason, we came up with this rather broad motion, and I'm going to read the motion. The motion is to direct the superintendent to explore the long-term financial stability and diversity of the district under the new state administration regulations, including additional membership and community-based solutions. And so I'm going to ask somebody in a minute to propose that, and then we can discuss it. But the, the meaning of it is to allow this, give the superintendent the the authority to start exploring some of these issues, which is going to require which is going to require some financial analysis, among other things. And eventually, for example, on the notion of bringing in a new member town, our current member towns have the last word on that, right? Because they're the ones who vote to allow a member to come in. So part of what we're going to have to do is have a conversation to them to find out what they want. But we really can't have that conversation until we have a little bit more understanding of what some of the financial and other impacts are going to be. And this will allow the superintendent and his staff to kind of pursue that. Alice? You're on mute, Alice.
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, vote?
Oh, sorry, I just have.
Hold on, Jennifer?
There's a quick question. So I assume that any of these discussions with a potentially new person, you know, new district or new member, would include how we would allocate slots for that new member and all of those kind of, because they'd come in with a zero four-year rolling average?
The entire
Process.
of what it means to have a new member come in and how that impacts what the regional agreement says about that and how we want to handle the financial part of that is all something that we would have to discuss.
Okay.
And all our members would have to agree to it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll move to a vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's move on. Superintendent Negotiations and Evaluations Subcommittee, Jennifer?
Okay, so we're, thank you so much for Dan, because he, we would not be here without him and his effort and the whole executive team. So they put together a great synopsis of what Ed has accomplished this year and what he's, you know, the challenges he's faced. So you guys all saw the results. Is there any questions about the process or how we move forward from here? Okay, Jeff?
I thought it was a very good process. It was sensible. We only had four areas this year, which allowed us to focus on them more easily. The evidence was, was, I think, very clear. And I thought it was a very good process that did not take me an excessive amount of time.
It was clear. I mean, I think I like the fact that it's very straightforward and we know exactly what we're looking at, and the supporting documentation justifies whatever, however, we voted or evaluated. So going forward, I will look at the results. I've looked at the results, but I will discuss with Dan. We have to submit it to Desi by the end of the, by the end of July. And I think Pam, you have to sign it, so I'll put something together and get you to sign it.
Okay. I agree with Jeff. It was a very good process. So do you need a motion? No.
No, the motion will only be if we had had to go into executive session to discuss remuneration, and we don't need to do that, so no, we're good.
Okay.
Yep.
Jeff?
Can I make one comment about the evaluation results?
Yes.
Would that be appropriate?
If you wish.
Okay. I just want to say that the thing that really caught my attention this year about Ed's accomplishments is when, at the beginning of the year, it turned out that we were going to have so many children applying to the school. He took an idea that we had, you know, just kicked around a little bit about, ha, 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 wouldn't it be funny if we got a lot of applicants and we needed to get 800 students? And Ed had already been like scratching on a sheet of paper how that would happen. I remember having that discussion with him. It was a laugh the previous year, the start of this year. And he just turned around overnight, basically, and came back with not yet a firm proposal, but a sensible, what seemed like a sensible path to move forward on this in what I thought was a remarkably short period of time to do so in a manner that would allow a lot more students to come to the school without overburdening our member towns. And there's no guarantee that this plan is going to fully work out. And of course, it's going to take more time to finish it than he's going to be here. But just the fact that instead of just treading water this year, which is, which is all that one could expect based on how horrible COVID was, he was still able, on the spur of the moment, on his own, without a lot of discussion, to come up with a plan that was coherent and at least thought about finances and would greatly imaginative, unexpected, and would greatly benefit our member towns and allow a lot more students to be able to attend the school over time, at very little financial impact on our member towns. I just wanted to emphasize that. One point is I have not known a lot of leaders in this profession who I think would have been able to do the same.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments.
Yes, well said. Okay, any other comments? Let's move on to Secretary's Report. Alice?
I didn't receive any comments, so I guess we can make a motion.
I will move to accept the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank Julia and Alice for all their work on the minutes. It's not insignificant, so much appreciated.
It's a lot easier than it used to be, though. Right now.
Still a lot of work. Okay, this is the point. July is our traditional time that we do our reorganization of the school committee and elect our new officers for the coming year. We are a small school committee, and I really want to encourage everyone to think about stepping into leadership for the school committee. So with that said, what I would like now is a vote to, or a motion to allow the superintendent to preside temporarily.
Second.
Any discussion? Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes. Alice is on mute.
You're muted, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes.
Thank you, School Committee. I would like to now open the floor for nominations for Chair for the 2021-2022 year. Alice DeLuca.
I'd like to nominate Pam Nurse, if she'll do it.
Second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none at this point, the superintendent, who presiding, would ask the nominee if they would be interested in continuing as Chair. Since my screen is frozen.
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
Okay. I'll say, I am willing to do it for one more year, and I want to put that out there. So, because I do think we need to then also be thinking about other people to be stepping into the role as Chair. But I'd be willing to do it for one more year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I now would entertain a motion to close nominations for the Chair and return.
Return the power to the Chair.
Yeah.
Do we only have to vote?
It's already gone to my head, so.
No, we have to vote for the Chair first, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay. It's only been 15 years. Oh, so, yes, can we have a motion for Pam Nurse to serve as Chair? Or a vote?
A vote.
Vote, da-da-da. Roll call.
Roll, oh, God, I start my own vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes, with gratitude.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry that was so cumbersome on my part, but Pam, the meeting is now yours.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone. I would like to open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair for the 2021-2022 school year. Alice?
I'll nominate Steve Ladue.
Second.
Are there other nominations? If not, okay, I'm going to be even more awkward. I don't, so if not, Steve, would you accept the nomination?
Sure.
So enthusiastic.
Drowningly, yes.
So one more call for nominations for Vice Chair. If not, I will close them, or can I have a, do I need a motion to close the nominations? No, okay, then let's move to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes.
Well, congratulations, Steve.
Thank you. I think.
Appreciate it. I'd like to open the floor for nominations for Secretary. Jeff?
I'll nominate Alice DeLuca.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Give it a minute, so we're going to sit with silence here for a minute. Alice, will you serve as Secretary for another year?
Yes.
With enthusiasm, good. Then I will close the nominations and move to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes, thank you.
Judy Crocker, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And I want to give a very, very special thank you to Jeff for being a terrific partner on the Officers Committee as Vice Chair for the last year. I know you kind of stepped in after doing, you know, being the Chair, Vice Chair, I think probably every officer for a very long time. And it was very, very much appreciated to all your work over the past year.
Thank you, and this will then be another vacation year for me, my last year on the school committee.
Well, well, a lot of work on the CAA, and just keep that in mind.
Just think, Jeff.
Talking about that, I hope that Stephen is going to also remain Chair of the FINCOM as we, he should think about that as we approach next year.
Oh, but Jeff, you have those skills, too.
CAA is it for me.
Well, on that note, there is plenty of other discussion to come. And, you know, between now and our next meeting, I will be reaching out to everyone about our committee so that we are ready in September to really step into kind of our new reorganization. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Pam, do we have minutes to approve?
We did. Yep, that was right before the election of officers. Anything else that might have been missed?
Thank you all very much.
Okay, let's do our vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes? Hey, Michael's on mute, but I think you.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes, and the groundhog's back out eating my lawn, so I think the storms are over.
Groundhog, I have bunnies everywhere, so.
So many. Well, thanks to everyone. I hope we may not see you all until, what, September now?
Well, maybe we're going to need them in August.
Yeah, we're probably going to need another meeting.
We're going to need them in August.
So no August vacations. Is that okay with everyone? Yeah, Ed is saying no, absolutely not. We'll be in touch about a next meeting. Again, I want to thank everyone for just so much work over the past year. I, you know, I think, and a special, special thank to Ed and your team. You know, Minuteman is in such a strong position, and all of your work to get and keep us there is so appreciated.
Thank you.
Hey, good night.
I don't feel alone. Good night.
Happy summer.